Is your local business or organization looking to give back to the community? Help keep our roads clean by joining the Adopt a Road program administered by Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful. Keeping our roads clean is a great way for team building as well as exposure for your business. Select the road your business wants to adopt and dispatch a team to remove litter and debris. Participants will receive two signs showing their organization's name, as well as safety equipment and instructions for cleaning roads. You can help keep Tampa Bay beautiful by adopting your own road today. To learn more, visit hcfl.gov/cleanhc.
Hello, Mother. Something smells good.
Good morning, sweetie. I'm making breakfast for you. Can you clean the bacon pan for me?
Sure thing. No, Billy, don't do it. It's bad for your pipes and bad for the environment. Don't listen to him, Billy. Just pour it down the drain and forget about it. What's a little grease going to do? Actually, there's a lot that grease can do to damage your home and the environment. Picture this. When you decide to pour fats, oils, or grease down the drain, you are letting those substances harden up and stick to your pipe walls, causing clogs and backups in your home that could eventually lead to expensive repairs. And can also cause gross smells and a nasty situation for your neighborhood and the environment. You can smell it. Instead, when the substance cools down, stick it in a plastic container. Make sure the lid is sealed tight and drop it off at your nearest cooking oil recycling station in Hillsborough County. That way, you're helping the environment and saving your family money. So they could buy you that new skateboard you've always wanted. It's a win-win for everyone. New skateboard? Oh, yeah. Your way is definitely better than mine. Let's recycle that grease.
For more information on how you can recycle your fats, oils, or grease, visit hcfl.gov/corn.
Don't let mosquitoes ruin your day. Fight the bite by removing standing water on your property. Standing water of any kind is a breeding ground for mosquitoes. Do your part and help reduce the mosquito population. Visit hcfl.gov/fightthebite.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Wednesday, December 11th, 2024 Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Comprehensive Plan Amendment Workshop. Before I hand things over to the Planning Commission, I want to read into the record from Commissioner Cohen. I'm unable to attend today's Comp Plan Amendment Workshop. I apologize for any inconvenience this may cause. Thank you. And with that, can we have the clerk provide a roll call to establish quorum?
Good afternoon. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hagan?
Here.
Bow?
Here.
Cameron Sepeda? I can hear you, Cameron Sepeda, but I see you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Now I can hear you.
Oh, thank you. Good. Thank you.
Cohen?
Good afternoon.
Miller? Miller?
That's me. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Myers?
Here.
Willstall?
Here.
You have a quorum, sir.
All right, thank you. I'll pass things over to Planning Commission for introduce the First Amendment.
Okay, thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have 11 items for you this evening, and I'll be taking care of the first three items. So go ahead and start with item A1, which is HCCPA 23-15. You may remember this from earlier this year. This request was originally briefed back in June, and then we had a public hearing in the summer. I'm sorry, no, we did not have a public hearing this summer. They had a public hearing with the Planning Commission in the summer. And at that time, the applicant decided to continue the item to the October cycle of plan amendments. And today, we're providing a brief summary of the revised request with a public hearing set for January 13th. Next slide, please. This is a privately initiated text amendment that applies to one geographical area of the county. Specifically, it's a 3,000-acre piece of land to the south of State Road 60. The applicant is requesting to modify existing language under the Energy Industrial Park section of the future land use element that pertains to this area. Next slide, please. Again, this request was originally part of the April 2024 cycle of plan amendments and is now in the April cycle. The site is located in the urban service area, and it is not located within the limits of a community plan. The site is bordered generally by State Road 60 on the north, Dover Road to the west, Turkey Creek Road to the east, and then Durant Road is the road that you see on the south there. Next slide, please. The Energy Industrial Park Future Land Use category is a unique category in that it applies to a select geographical area of unincorporated Hillsborough County. This category, along with the text that supports the category's vision and contains the requirements for the Energy Industrial Park, that was created through a privately initiated text amendment back in 2010. The policies were written based on the topography of the site as well as the available energy-producing technology at that time. Then in 2022, some of you may recall, there was a privately initiated text amendment that proposed to modify the language to allow for one energy-producing output rather than the two that was originally approved, so long as that output was doubled to achieve the vision of the Energy Industrial Park. And that amendment was approved and is in effect today. Next slide, please. I want to point out that this is one of two Energy Industrial Park privately initiated plan amendments in this October cycle. This is 2315, but HCCPA 2406 is a separate amendment. I'll be covering that in the next agenda item. Both 2315 and 2406 affect the same site, but each request has different applicants and is also associated with different property owners. But both amendments do affect the entire property due to the changes in the text for this entire future land use category. The same Planning Commission Planner, me, is reviewing both items. And then we're also working in close collaboration with all the reviewing agencies for each amendment. Next slide, please. Regarding the impacts, the current language states that all industrial, office, and commercial uses are limited to 700 acres in the northwest portion of the site along State Road 60, and commercial uses are not permitted along State Road 60 east of Turkey Creek. And by that, I mean Turkey Creek, the creek itself, not Turkey Creek Road. The proposed language would remove that northwest directional and replace it with north, and it would also delete the words "along State Road 60" in the 700 acres that I, language that I referenced above. It would also allow for commercial uses east of Turkey Creek, the creek itself, by replacing the language with a folio number showing that exact property. I have a graphic on the next slide for illustrative purposes. Next slide, please. So this slide shows the entire Energy Industrial Park on the left, outlined in black. In red is the folio the applicant is requesting to be the new eastern boundary of where commercial uses may be located. To the right is a zoomed-in version of the map, and you can see where Turkey Creek is compared to the location of the folio to the east. So the blue line, the squiggly line, is the creek itself. And then the red outline is the parcel, the folio the applicant is requesting to modify the language to. That concludes my presentation, and I'm here for any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. Any questions, comments on CPA 2315?
I did have one question. Thank you, Chair. I, on that property, that's the first I've seen of that, the boundary change of that line, does that affect the, I guess it's the 2406 from having commercial or no?
Well, the language would affect the entire future land use category, so yes, it would. We're working with the applicants to make sure that both of them are speaking to one another, and we're not doing something in isolation that would maybe negatively affect the other. So it would affect the language. But from what the request is for 2406, I don't see that that, there is a negative impact necessarily on what the next item is requesting. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on CPA 2315? All right, if we can go to CPA 2406?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, HTV. Again, Melissa Leinhart for the Record, Planning Commission staff. This presentation is regarding HCCPA 2406, which is Energy Industrial Park for the residential uses. This item was briefed to you earlier this year. However, the applicant continued the item prior to the public hearing. So the consistency review of this request had not been made previously. The applicant then revised their request, and that's what I'll be presenting on today. Next slide, please. Again, this is a privately initiated text amendment. Applies to one geographical area of unincorporated county. It would affect objectives 58 and 59 of the future land use element, the section that does cover the future land use category, Energy Industrial Park. And again, this is 3,000 acres of land south of State Road 60. One of the proposed changes that I'll get into in a few slides affects a smaller area, kind of a subset of the overall Energy Industrial Park. It's about 475 acres, and that's on the south side of the railroad tracks. But the other proposed changes that I'll go over would affect the entire Energy Industrial Park area. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, this was originally part of a previous cycle from January of earlier this year. It's been continued to the October cycle of plan amendments. The site is in the urban service area. It is not located within the limits of a community plan. And again, the site is bordered generally by State Road 60 to the north, Dover to the west, Turkey Creek Road to the east, and Durant to the south. And you can see here on this map in particular, I have a better graphic coming up here, but there is a, the railroad track kind of bifurcates the property from the west going to the southeast. And then the other cutout that you see on the eastern side of the property is a TCO easement. Next slide, please. The Energy Industrial Park Future Land Use category, again, unique category created in 2010 through a privately initiated plan amendment process. And the policies were written based on the topography of the site and the energy-producing technology that was available at that time. Next slide, please. Back in 2010, there was a large public outreach effort. And then, again, as I mentioned in the previous presentation, there was another change, or there was a change made in 2022 that's in effect today. But essentially, it was a privately initiated text amendment that modified the language under this category, allowing for one energy-producing output rather than the two that were previously required, so long as that output was doubled to achieve that overall vision of the Energy Industrial Park. Next slide, please. As I mentioned in my previous presentation, there is, this is the second one, one out of two Energy Industrial Park privately initiated amendments in this cycle. The previous amendment, 2315, is separate, and I just covered that. Both of them affect the same site. Both have the same Planning Commission Planner reviewing them. And we're also working with those reviewing agencies, as I mentioned. Next slide, please. The currently adopted language does not allow for any residential uses. There's also a requirement that a minimum of 40% of the total land area in the Energy Industrial Park must be utilized for energy-producing uses. The current language also limits the industrial and warehousing, manufacturing, those types of uses to 30% of the overall land area. And direct access from a major arterial is required in the adopted language. In this case, that will be State Road 60. Next slide, please. The proposed language would change the name of the future land use category to Energy Innovation Park. It would also allow for the consideration of residential at up to three dwelling units per gross acre in that 475-acre area to the south of the railroad tracks. I'll show a graphic of that on the next slide. It would allow direct access to a collector roadway, which would be Dover Road to serve that residential use on the southwest corner of the site. It would remove language requiring energy-producing energy be constructed first. And I also wanted to mention that I've spoken with the applicant about that that change, that proposed modification to the language. And they've indicated that was not their intent, so they'll be revising their language after these briefings and workshops this week with the Planning Commission and yourselves. They'll be revising that language, and they'll be scheduled for a Planning Commission public hearing in February, as well as the board in February. So they will not be going in January. They asked to continue for another month, so they'll have time to address those issues. Getting back to the impacts, it would also decrease the minimum requirement for energy-producing uses from 40%, as it's written today, to 20%. It would remove language that commercial and industrial uses are ancillary to energy-producing uses. It would allow for those industrial uses to exceed the current limit of 30% of the overall land area by not specifying a limit at all. It would also allow for the potential of additional Energy Industrial Park, or in this case, if the name gets changed, Energy Innovation Park designations in other areas of unincorporated Hillsborough County. And it also would specifically allow rooftop solar or other forms of co-located energy production. Next slide, please. I apologize. I forgot to cue that next slide there. But those are the items that I just went over. And then if you could change it to the next slide, please. This one shows a more detailed view of the Energy Industrial Park area as a whole. And that cross-hatched area on the southwest side, on the other side of the railroad tracks, the 475 acres that I mentioned, that's where the applicant is seeking to put the residential units at up to three dwelling units per acre. That concludes my presentation. I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Any questions, comments? CPA 2406?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Commissioner Willstall?
Yes, sir.
First, Ms. Leinhart, you said there's no rezoning, but there is housing for the research people in the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, I believe.
The way that the language is written today?
Yes. Because I was pretty surprised when I read it that there's already, there's already zoned approval for dwelling units in there for the researchers.
So that would be for the, we allow that in industrial categories for basically like security guards and people that need to reside on site for security? But as far as the zoning conditions are concerned from 2010, I'm not familiar with that.
Oh, yeah, it says, it says housing for the researchers in there. Like 99% sure, because I just decided to read it. So I, maybe we can clear that up. But I am pretty sure that this already facilitates that there can be housing established for the research units that may possibly go on there. I just think that that's an important point for everybody that's interested in this land. And the Superfund Site, one thing that keeps getting said, was said a lot, but the Superfund Site is not being developed in any of the past or current amendments, correct?
We don't have the rezoning on this agenda today. So, and I know Mr. Gormley is here. He may be have more information on that. But for the purposes of this, we are just talking about comprehensive plan language. So I'm not sure what their site plan is proposing for. I know there is a major modification in right now, but I'm not, I'm not sure about that.
Well, even with the zoning aside, does the Comprehensive Plan not have it etched out of that Superfund? It's just a blanket? Because I was pretty sure the Superfund was always blocked out.
But the Comprehensive Plan is, it's zoomed out and long-range in nature, so it doesn't have the details of that. That would come through a site plan and the conditions of approval associated with the rezoning in the site plan. So I'm not sure if the previous 2010 rezoning had development over there. If HTV, if you don't mind going back and showing the presentation, the second to last slide, the aerial, there is a square that's shown on the, on the map that you can see. That is where, from, from the agency comments, that is the limit of the Superfund Site that, that we've gotten information on. Not sure, HTV, if you're able to share my presentation for 2406 again, please. There you go. Thank you. Would you mind going to the second to last slide? No, I'm sorry. That's the next item. It's the 2406, the one I just presented. Yes, thank you. So you can, oh, so sorry, did that one. That's perfect. Oh, I'm not sure if you can see my mouse here below State Road 62. There's the square here. Can y'all see my mouse or no? Not sure if that translates.
Yep, there's that black square right there in the middle.
Yep, that's exactly where the, the limits of the Superfund Site are, to my knowledge. That, and I should point out that because we did receive some revisions for both this one, 2406, and the previous item, 2315, we did resend these out for agency comments, and we are still getting those back in. So we will be addressing that in our staff report, what, you know, all the regulatory agencies have said about that Superfund Site, this former sludge ponds, and include that information in our review.
Okay, and right now, these folks could end up with a ton of those big gaudy windmill that like murder birds in mass amounts, right? They could do those huge windmills there?
Yes, solar.
All right, so I think-
Solar winds, all biomass. There's, there's a bunch of different types of of that renewable energy listed in 2010. And I, and I do believe that's part of the rationale for resubmitting these two items is that that energy-producing technology has really changed over the last 15 years. So I think that is the reason for part of the change, and then the rezoning would reflect that as well.
Okay. Yeah, I think that those things, as we keep going, clearing up that the Superfund Site has never been approved for anything, is not being asked for, to my knowledge right now. I believe there's limited business that's going to happen that's approved on the east side. It's mostly going to continue to be grazed with cattle, to my understanding. So it sounds like, right now, they could end up with tons more of those solar fields that are actually quite unhealthy for the environment. So I think that those are just big conversations that not many people understand, the mass scale of the the several million square footage of commercial that is already approved and can go in there today. And I think that that's, those are important things that need to continue to be highlighted of is what's already there if they wanted it. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I don't see anyone else in the queue, so next item.
Thank you. So this next item, again, Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff, is HCCPA 24-32. HTV, if you don't mind sharing my presentation for this one, please. This is regarding the Planned Environmental Community Policy 47.18. Thank you so much. This is a privately initiated text amendment as well. Next slide, please. It applies to approximately 1,954 acres of land on the west side of Highway 301. So we're moving much further north in unincorporated county, just south of the Pasco County border, again, on the west side of 301. This is a privately initiated text amendment to future land use element on Policy 47.18 under Objective 47. And essentially, the applicant is requesting to remove this policy in its entirety. Next slide, please. This item is part of the October 24 cycle of plan amendments. While this is a text amendment, the text does apply to one geographical area of unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planned Environmental Community 1/0 Future Land Use category is located in that northern portion of unincorporated county, as I mentioned. It's in the rural area, and it's not located within the limits of a community plan. Next slide, please. The Planned Environmental Community category was new and proposed in 2005 through a privately initiated plan amendment process. The effect of the new category was to increase density on properties in the rural area that are served by public water and wastewater, and that's in exchange for environmental protection enhancements. Next slide, please. As far as the impacts are concerned, according to Policy 47.18 today, planned developments in this category must provide for public access to portions of a regional resource. This requirement does not mandate a trail access to all parts of that resource. And if the public policy prohibits public entry, access is limited to viewing access. And in our definition section of the Comprehensive Plan, a regional resource is defined as a large, at a minimum of 1,000 acres, environmentally significant and verified publicly-owned park slash natural resource area. And it uses examples like ELAP lands, rivers, streams, bays, and lakes. And the proposed amendment includes the deletion of this policy in its entirety. And the applicant has cited safety concerns from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. And I will be providing that letter when I, we make our official consistency review as part of the backup. Next slide, please. That concludes my presentation. I'm here for any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. Any questions, comments on this item? Okay, next item.
Okay, thank you. So items A4 through A7 will be presented by Mr. Jay Collins. And instead of me introducing each one, I'm just going to have him kind of run through and do what we just did before. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jay Collins, Planning Commission staff. Excuse me. As Ms. Leinhart said, these four items are related. They're basically two and two. You've got text amendments to the urban service boundary, and then you have the corresponding map amendments with them. The first one is HCCPA 2435, Baumwahn-Mama Road East. This is the urban service area extension. I'm afraid that my presentation is not moving through. HTV, if possible, could you please share your screen? I'm going to go ahead and stop this since this is not actually sharing on my end.
Yes, one second.
Thank you. While he brings that up, I can go ahead and continue with it. Basically, again, we have two different amendments that are here. One of them, and they are the same application, you have Baumwahn-Mama East and Baumwahn-Mama West. Basically, where we are is we're at 672 Baumwahn-Mama Road. And then we have Sweat Loop Road on the southern side. Basically, you've got about 272 acres on the west side, and you've got 370 acres on the east side. HTV, or is it possible to get that up? That looked like it was, that's one of ours. This is for 35 and 36.
Sorry, you guys. Just give me one second.
No, no, I apologize, Commissioners, as it always is. When you're in the beginning of it, everything works. And then once you actually go live- and then once you actually go live, here we are. That's it, right there, 35, 36. HTV, if you're still at, there we go. That's, that is Ms. Linehart's.
Alright, do we need to move forward to mothers and come back to this?
There it is. Alright, there's 35. Sir, we can continue if you like.
Okay, thank you.
HTV, can you please put in presentation mode and go to the net? There we go. Thank you. So, next slide, please. Thank you. So again, this is an expansion of the urban service area. Those are text amendments within the comprehensive plan for 370 acres. It is associated with HCCPA 2436. Next slide, please. This just shows you both of these side by side. Again, 2435 is on the east side of the road for Baumwahn Mama, which is running north and south. 672 is our northern boundary. Our southern boundary is Sweat Loop Road, or Sweat Loop Road. And again, corresponding amendment is 2436 as a map amendment. The surrounding areas, you'll see in this, you've got some rural development that out here. You've got some agricultural. There's a solar farm for Tico to the south and to the west. And you also have for both of these sites, for 35, as well as for 37, they are planned developments within the RP2. So there's already that planned village entitlements that are under them. Next slide, please. So the amendment would bring 370 acres into the urban service boundary, requiring at a minimum the connection of public water and sewer. This concludes this part of the presentation. Next slide, please. And Commissioner, we can take questions here, or we can go straight into the map amendment?
I don't see anyone in the queue, so I think you can continue.
Thank you, sir. Next present, next, yeah, thank you. This is the map amendment. Next slide, please. Again, from Residential Plan 2 to Residential 4. Just as a note, these areas are within the board-directed area for the publicly-initiated amendments for the urban service area expansion, as well as Residential 4 being what the board has instructed staff to look at. Again, these are private amendments, but private individuals do have the ability to apply at the same time that we are doing the public work. Next slide, please. This is just showing you the general location. One thing to note here, we are about two miles east of the current urban service area. Next slide, please. Again, this just shows you a little bit of the aerial for where we are. We are within the Baum Community Plan and the South Shore Area Wide Systems Plan. One thing to note here, as you can see from the partialization of this area, there's quite a bit of residential in this area within the rural area. Next slide, please. This just shows you the current adopted future land use map, showing you the site outlined in black with the Residential Plan 2 land use category. To the south and to the west, you'll see a little bit of Wy Mama Village Residential 2. The green color that is to the north, as well as to the west, is natural preservation. And the green color that is to the east and to the south is agricultural rural 1 to 5. Next slide, please. Same map, just showing you the Residential 4. Next slide, please. And this slide just shows you some of the proposed impacts from the site. Again, the proposed amendment would remove the Residential Plan 2 Community Commercial Use and Planned Village Concept, while increasing the potential density, and those numbers are spelled out on the slide. Next slide, please. And that concludes this part of the presentation.
Got any questions or comments? Alright, seeing none, go to the next two.
HTV, if you could please go to the next PowerPoint, and it would be 36, 37, or excuse me, 37, 38.
Yes, I will do. Give me one second.
And as HTV brings this up, again, we already did some of the heavy lifting here with the other presentation. This is just basically right across the street on Baumwahn Mama Road. It is 270 acres. There you go. Thank you, HTV. If you could just proceed to the next slide. This is for the urban service boundary extension in this area. Again, just over 270 acres, and it is associated with HCCPA 2438. Next slide, please. This just shows you, this was the same image that we showed on the other presentation to show you the lay of the land. Next slide, please. And again, the amendment would bring 272.3 acres into the urban service area, requiring at a minimum a connection to public water and sewer. Next slide, please, and this concludes this part of the presentation.
And you can go to the next one.
Yeah, and Lindsay, I'm sorry, HTV, we still need that same presentation up. And next slide, please. This is the map amendment. Next slide, please. Again, this is from Residential Plan 2 to Residential 4. Next slide, please. Again, the general area of where this is within southeastern Hillsborough County in the Baum Community Plan South Shore Area Wide Systems Plan. Next slide, please. Already have gone through the general area. Again, this also has a planned development associated with it under a Planned Village Concept. Next slide, please. So this is the adopted future land use map. The previous image, as well as this image, does show you a little bit to the west where the urban service boundary is. The urban service boundary being that blue line that you can see in the upper left hand of your screen, as well as in the lower left hand of your screen within Wy Mama. Some of the other land uses, again, the Residential Plan 2 for the site itself, Wy Mama Village Residential 2 directly to the south. And in the urban service boundary, you'll see some residential sixes, those yellows, as well as the reds, which are office commercial twenties. Next slide, please. Same map, just showing you the Residential 4. Next slide, please. And this final slide shows you again some of the impacts. Removing Residential Plan 2, that means that the proposed amendment would remove the community commercial use, as well as the Planned Village Concept, while increasing the potential density. The density increase is spelled out there in front of the impacts on that slide. Next slide, please, and this concludes the presentation.
Any questions or comments, Commissioner Wostel?
Does he have one more? Because I'm fine waiting till the end, or was that it?
That was it.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Is the board able to consider, I understand, when were these RP2s? When were these approved? I don't know which year.
Are you talking about the zoning, sir?
Yeah, when were these all done? For our estimate?
Perhaps. Again, Mr. Grady or Mr. Gormley are on. I do not know off the top of my head certainly when these were. We can certainly find out for you.
Okay, I understand that they have what they have right now, but if we moved forward on these, can the board consider making, especially during expansions of the urban service area, that those mobility fees are only eligible to be spent within the expanded urban service area? Is that something that you can require in a comp plan amendment?
That's a good question. It's certainly a question I've never been posed before. That actually may be something that we would have to take under advisement and get back with you, sir.
Because we're expanding our current quote-unquote infrastructure grid, and these mobility maps are gigantic, especially for the two new commissioners that might not have had a chance to review them yet. They're massive. These dollars can literally be spent 30 miles away from this new expansion of the service area, which I'm fine with. We need to grow the supply of our housing inventory to meet the demand, so that our prices of homes can stabilize in the county. But I think that it's prudent that on these expansions, if we can have it in the comprehensive plan that these new mobility impact fees are only eligible to be spent within the expanded urban service area to improve that new grid's infrastructure, I think that that's appropriate, not for us to spend it 30 miles away and then maybe get back to the new expanded area in eight years. So if that's something that we can do, I'm very interested in those options, at least being shown to my colleagues for them to see, because it just makes, it makes more sense, and it's what's fair, frankly. And then also, us to find a way that when these new expansions are going up, we somehow promote. Mr. Gormley, you and I have talked about these MUFASs, but rather than it being a option, that it's just being a requirement. And that's a conversation that I would like to have as we expand these new areas of making sure that the roads and stoplights are in there and done and turned on before the new home projects. Whether if that's us finding a way to do a protected bond agreement, saying, hey, we're going to do the infrastructure, or you can do the infrastructure, and either way, we're protected. We're going to get in the new roads and the new stoplights beforehand, and we're going to make sure that it's in the area of those new homes. I would like to, I would like for my colleagues and I to know if that is an option for us to protect new development and make it safer going forward. There is a disaster area right down there on Baumwahn Mama Road. Mr. Gormley and I were talking about it yesterday, and I think that if we can relegate and protect these new impact dollars to go into the expanded area, that that's what would make the most sense. So if that can be brought back to us for some information for those to consider, I'd appreciate it. I yield. Thank you.
Yes, so if you can please provide us with a report that addresses Commissioner Wostel's questions. I think they are valid, so if you can-
Yes, sir.
Do that. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, I don't see anyone else in the queue, so next item?
Next item will be presented by Ms. Alexis Myers. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Alexis Myers, Planning Commission Staff. I'm here to present HCCPA 2440, located at 7812 Cosway Boulevard. This is a privately initiated map amendment that is small in scale and approximately 8.39 acres. The applicant is requesting to change the future land use category from Residential 9 to Office Commercial 20. This is the general location map. The site is in the urban service area and within the limits of the Greater Prom River Community Plan, and it is also north of Delaney Creek. Here is the aerial of the site. It is north of Cosway Boulevard and east of South 78th Street. Heavy industrial uses are currently on the site. Light industrial uses are currently, I'm sorry, are directly east, and light commercial uses are to the west and south across Cosway Boulevard. As I mentioned in the last slide, Delaney Creek is just north of the property. Currently, the future land use designation is Residential 9. Other future land use designations shown in this map include Office Commercial 20 and Residential 20. The applicant is requesting to change the future land use category to Office Commercial 20. Next are the impacts. As far as existing conditions, currently under RES 9, the site could consider 75 dwelling units, or either 127,913 square feet, or 182,734 square feet of non-residential uses. Under the proposed future land use designation of OC 20, the site could consider 167 dwelling units, or either 127,913 square feet, or 274,101 square feet of non-residential uses. The proposed amendment will result in the increase of higher residential density and greater commercial intensity, including commercial intensive uses. And this concludes my presentation for HCCPA 2440, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I don't see anyone in the queue, so if we can go to the next item?
Yes, sir. Item A9 will be presented by Mr. Tyreek Royal. Thank you.
Morning Commissioners. Good afternoon. Tyreek Royal, Planning Commission Staff, and I'll be presenting HCCPA 2441 at 1246 to Brownsberry Road. This request is privately initiated, small-scale map amendment with approximately 27.7 acres, 70 acres. The request is to change the land use designation from AR 15 to OC 20. The location of the site is in the northeastern portion of the unincorporated Hillsborough County. It's a part of the October 2024 cycle, and it's located in the Teno Sassa Community Plant. This is an aerial of the photo of the site outlined here in pink. It's located north of Brownsberry Road, west of McIntosh Road. The surrounding uses include agricultural and vacant uses to the northwest and east, with single-family uses to the south. The site is in AR 15 Future Land Use category. It allows for the consideration farms, ranches, feedlots, residential uses, rural-scale neighborhood commercial uses, offices, industrial uses related agricultural, and mining-related activities. Commercial uses are subject to locational criteria. The applicant is requesting to change the future land use category from AR 15 to OC 20. The OC 20 category allows for consideration of community commercial type uses, office uses, mixed-use developments, and compatible residential uses. Agriculture uses may be permitted pursuant to the policies of agricultural objective areas of the future land use element. Onto the impacts, the changes from AR 15 to OC 20 would allow for an increase in development by allowing significantly higher residential density and the greater commercial intensity. The density of one dwelling unit for five gross acres would increase to 20 dwelling units per gross acre. The commercial intensity included, including commercial intensive, would increase from 2.25 FAR to a maximum of 301,000 square feet approximately, to 0.75 FAR, or a maximum of approximately 904,000 square feet. Anything above 0.35 FAR must be for office or residential support uses and not retail. And that concludes my presentation. Here to answer any questions.
Alright, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, our next item?
Yes, sir. The next item will be presented by Ms. Alexis Myers. Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. Again, Alexis Myers, Planning Commission Staff. I'm here to present HCCPA 2440, located at 2212 South 78th Street. This is a privately initiated map amendment that is small in scale and approximately 2.29 acres. The applicant is requesting to change the future land use category from Residential 9 to Residential 16. This is the general location map. The site is in the urban service area and within the limits of the Greater Prom River Community Plan. Here is the aerial of the site. The site is located east of South 78th Street and north of South 24th Street. Vacant land and light commercial uses are currently on the site. Light commercial uses are directly south, and single-family uses extend to the northeast and west. Public, quasi-public and institutional uses are to the west across South 78th Street. Currently, the future land use of the site is Residential 9. Other future land use categories shown in this map include Office Commercial 20, Residential 6, and Residential 20. Again, the applicant is requesting to change the future land use designation to Residential 16. Next are the impacts. As far as existing conditions, currently under RES 9, the site could consider 20 dwelling units, or either 34,913 square feet, or 49,876 square feet of non-residential uses. Under the proposed future land use designation of OC 20, the site could consider 167 dwelling units, or the same amount of square footage of non-residential uses. The proposed amendment will result in the increase of higher residential density, and this concludes my presentation for HCCPA 2442. And this concludes my presentation for HCCPA 2442. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. I don't see anyone in the queue. So we can go to the last item.
Yes, sir. The last item will be presented by Ms. Jillian Massey. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can you all hear me and see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, good afternoon. This is Jillian Massey with Planning Commission staff. I'll be briefing on HCCPA 24-43, uh, located at 7351 Muck Pond Road. This request is a privately initiated, small-scale map amendment. It's made up of three parcels that total approximately 19.1 acres. The request is to change the land use designation of these parcels from residential one to light industrial plan. The location of this plan amendment request is in the eastern portion of the county. It's part of the October cycle of plan amendments. It's located in the rural area and within the limits of the Thonotasasa Community Plan. This is an aerial photo of the site outlined in pink. It's located south of Muck Pond Road, northwest of I4 and Macintosh Road. Within the vicinity of the site, there are single-family residential and agricultural uses to the north, light and heavy commercial to the east. It's bound by Interstate 4 to the south, and there's agricultural uses to the west. This, uh, the site is in the residential one, future land use category. It allows for consideration of, uh, low-density residential, rural-scale neighborhood commercials, office and multipurpose projects. Uh, neighborhood commercial uses are subject to locational criteria. Surrounding land uses in the area include residential one to the north, east, and west. There is suburban mixed use and public, quasi-public, south of Interstate 4. And then there's one subdivision further southwest of the site with the designation of residential six, which is that brighter, uh, yellow color. The request is to change the site to light industrial plan, which allows for consideration of uses such as processing, manufacturing, recycling, and storage of materials at the predominant uses and with support offices, warehousing, and rural-scale retail uses being pursuant to locational criteria. And under this category, no residential, um, can be considered. This slide outlines the potential impacts of the requested land use change. Currently, under the residential one, the site can be considered for up to 19 dwelling units or approximately 208,000 square feet of non-residential uses. And that would be subject to locational criteria. The change to light industrial plan would not allow for consideration of residential uses. But it would allow for approximately up to 624,000 square feet of non-residential uses. The proposed amendment would increase the potential commercial intensity. It would also introduce light industrial uses, and it would eliminate residential uses. And this concludes my presentation. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments, CPA 2443? I don't see any. So with that, I appreciate the presentations and we're adjourned.
Thank you.